... have provided their response, and it says the Board of County Commissioners supports this bill and asks the Committee of the Legislature to act favorably upon it. So as I said at the time, I didn't recommend that we take a position on the bill as the delegation supported it until we heard from the Commissioners. We've now heard from the Commissioners, and the delegation is looking for support from us. So I suppose the question, I think for the Board is, do we -- we supported the original concept that we submitted to the delegation, that they've now changed the funding mechanism for the bill, and the question is, do we support the bill with the changed funding mechanism?
Looking for some consensus among my colleagues on how you would like to either remain with the original language, support the language that the delegation presented, and is apparently supported by way of the letter with the Commissioners. I need a little -- yes?
I have a question here. I understand that the language, the original language, is not what the bill is asking for right now, that they've changed the language of the bill, and that was able to get through the House, and also the Commissioners were able to jump on board with that through a letter. So if we're asking to change the language back to the original, is that going to affect the actual bill?
The bill has not been heard in the House or the Senate yet. It's still awaiting hearings in committee. So it could either be passed, considered as is, it could be amended, it could -- I think anything's on the table at this point. But Delegate Parrott would like to know if we support the bill as it's been submitted.
Yeah.
And again, it has a different funding model. Everything remains the same, except that it would be paid through maintenance of effort, which would impact the state numbers to us, and also the local numbers, where the original language was tuition-based, where the parent or guardian would pick up the cost, the one sixth of a class.
So have we seen what the bill, how the bill reads now compared to what the bill -- I'm sorry, maybe I didn't get the bill, maybe I got it, I just didn't -- we do have a --
We've been sending those all out, yes.
Okay, so I just need to look at that then, I'm sorry.
So we do, I'm sorry, do you want, we do need to reach some general agreement on this, because again, the language has changed from the original support of this legislation.
I'll start off, I, I'm sorry.
No.
Mrs. Harchman.
Oh, yes. I believe that the first time we put this through, that one of the concerns that some of us had was the idea that it was not really complete on what was going to happen. If a student comes into the school and is not full-time, we don't get money from the state for that student. Yet, to ask somebody to pay for a student to come to a public school after you're paying taxes for school seems strange, ridiculous, and I just, until we know exactly what it's going to entail, and what kind of rules would be set up for it, one of my concerns, I believe that I mentioned at the time, was we have teachers who are going to be evaluated based on their students' performance. So if I am a teacher in a school where my students are doing fairly well, and another, a student wants to come in, even though he or she may live out of the district, if there's no regulation as to what school that student may go to, he or she may come to me and raise my level of passing students, or the scores for students, and so on. So I'm just concerned that it does not seem to have been a very well-thought-out plan, and the issues that are going to arise have not been addressed. So I voted against it at the time, and I would not, I would not want either of them at this time, either what we sent in, or whatever they're thinking of doing with it, until I find out everything, how everything's going to unfold.
Other comments?
It still keeps the, I mean, we still have control over the, I mean, it's not like the state's telling us that this is the way it's going to be, we're still going to have control over who goes to what school and whenever, so we can still, I mean, my son was not going to get bumped out from somebody coming from another school when my son goes to that district. We still have that control to say, no, we're not going to do that.
The language remains the same, except for the funding.
The funding part.
That's the only change in the language.
So, and basically, the Commissioners have already given their blessing to the second, the change.
To the MOE, which means the Commissioners would be paying additional dollars, and the state would be paying additional dollars. Mrs. Fisher.
Listening to what Ms. Harchman just said, at least if, if the money comes from the Commissioners, it's not coming out of the pockets, again, of the parents, it would be coming from tax money, part of which was theirs.
Correct.
And I, I mean, that doesn't answer how I feel about it, I don't know yet how I feel about, but that's at least, takes a little bit off of what you were saying with the parents having to pay again.
Can I respond? Just respond. Mrs. Harchman.
The only thing with that is that it would be coming out of tax money, but they, we're not getting state dollars for those students, like we do for other full-time students.
Yes, we will.
Yes, we would.
If this language --
If the language, sorry.
You're fine.
She's right. If the language as submitted by the delegation were to pass, then for every --
That isn't what we submitted, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I, I had voted against that at the time, and that's why, because it still seems not very well set up, that it could easily change. And one of the things, when you said you could determine which school the student went to, and I believe Mr. Gassford asked if his son would be bumped, we did that at Williamsport, if you remember, for the magnet school, for the students to go there. We kept those kids from going to Williamsport and put them in another school, because there wasn't enough room for them, if you remember, when we were doing the districting.
Additional questions or comments? I'd like to reach some agreement.
I'll just, I'll go, I --
Yes, please.
If our state representatives, which is our delegation unanimously support it, and the Commissioners are willing to support it, then I'm, I'm willing to support it as well. What's most important to me is not the funding mechanism, but the ability to provide some of these services for students who might not otherwise get them. And if, if this is what makes our funding partners comfortable with us being able to do it from a funding point of view, then I'm glad to support them in that. That's, so that's where I am.
Mrs. Williams. So as to how this all plays out, will be left to the locals to determine, unless there are amendments to this bill that gives specifics as to how this will play out, I'm talking beyond the funding, I'm talking about, you know, really the --
I think that's correct.
And that would come --
Unless they were to amend it.
And that would come back to us, again, for discussion, or we would just go with whatever those amendments are, whether we like them or not.
I think if there's an amendment, we would take a position on the amendment as a, I mean, as a Board, if, if we can all get together, or as a response team, if that's, if it's quick in between meetings.
Okay.
So I would certainly want to weigh in on any amendment, certainly, yes.
Okay.
I think as we're all finding out, when legislation is proposed and goes to Annapolis, there's not a lot of control over what happens there, and that's why we have a team that tracks it, that's why Mrs. Cade and Mr. Trotta, and that's the purpose. And so every time we get new information, we bring it back. And that's why we're, we're sending those Friday updates home as well, so everyone is on the same page. Mrs. Fisher.
I've got a statement and a question. I would think if this legislation passes --
Is your mic on, Mrs. Fisher? We're having trouble hearing.
Maybe. Is it?
Yes.
It is now. It's on. I assume that we would have to create a policy, if this passes, to decide, for instance, the, the issues such as, when do we allow a student to enter one of our schools, I mean, there has to be available space in a class, things of that type. So I think that there's a number of things we can control that way. I'm concerned about, I know there's, there's a, I guess it's a law, that homeschooled students cannot get involved in extracurricular activities. Some classes, I don't know, this policy so far has not restricted, I don't think, the classes students can take, and some classes have a direct connection to extracurricular activities. I'm concerned about how that's going to play out.
Well, it's a yes and no. They're connected, but they're co-curricular if they are part of the class. There's a difference. You know, basketball is not part of phys ed. You know, robotics might be part of a technical, I don't know what, what the program might be. So there, there are some connections, co-curricular versus extracurricular, there is a difference. I'll let you finish, and then I have a comment regarding.
No, I, I guess what I need to see is, is that law, does it cover co-curricular as well as extracurricular or not?
Right now, as far as athletics are concerned, athletics are controlled by the MPSAA, which is a state, you know, and there's no laws keeping them, they are, they are the statewide mechanism that controls extracurricular activities. At this time, a homeschooled student cannot participate in extracurricular activities. They cannot participate in scholastic sports, can't, period. I would say that our original intent, and I think if you, forgive me, if you remember correctly, our original intent was that, you know, we'd have either a policy or regulations that would control some of these things. Most importantly, if a person wants to take one of these courses that is not available at a, at a private school, or for a homeschooled student, we would allow them to do that. Obviously, now it would be paid by the county, which is, is fine with me. But they would take it in the school district in which they are living. So if they're living in, let's say the Williamsport is close by here, if they're living in the Williamsport School District, and they want to take calculus, they'd have, would have to take it at Williamsport. They can't just hopscotch and say, well, I want to go out here and take it. You know, they would take the course that's being offered, at least that was my understanding, or that was our intent initially. So that would be something that you, as the Policy Committee and Superintendent writing regulations, would address if this passes.
Dr. Wilcox, would you?
I think that my understanding is consistent with Mr. Ridenhour said, that at some point, if the law is passed, the Board's going to have to write policy, and then we will promulgate regulation, which will come to the Board as well. And I think we can deal with all of those things, whether it's co-curricular or extracurricular, I think we can talk about access to magnet programs, we can talk about, you know, access to marching band, and spelling bees, all those kinds of, I think we can address those kinds of things through policy and procedures.
Regulation.
Regulation.
Hi. I've heard one member's opinion on this, I need to see if we have a majority that will go support the language that the delegation and the Commissioners are supporting at this point. Do I, I need, this isn't a formal vote, I just need some acknowledgement of existence. There's a yes, there's a yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, a maybe.
Maybe. It depends on what happens with the co-curricular and extracurricular, whether I, I support this funding over the other funding, but I wouldn't support any of it, depending on how the curricular and co-curricular stuff comes out.
It looks like we have a majority, a general agreement here, that we're going to move forward, so we'll get something out to Delegate Parrott within, as soon as possible.
And if we have any language change, we would get some kind of notification.
Every, when you, we know it, you get it, we do the Friday updates at all of these meetings, that's what we're all about, that's following our policy, BJ. I, I know it's been a long meeting, so we won't belabor this, but I did want just one update on the air ambulance, the Air Ambulance Medical Transportation Initiative. I've been meeting with Delaney and McColsky, and Carden's local reps, trying to get some energy going at the federal level. I know they've reached out to the Maryland Insurance Commissioner to try to maybe say light a fire about what can be done from his position. At this point, the delegation, instead of introducing the legislation we asked for, that would have, would seek a study of this, and try to gain an opportunity for individuals from all of these different stakeholders to be at the table at the same time, to try to come up with a solution. The delegation put a bill in and cross-fired in the Senate that would, I'm not sure if mandates the correct word, but would legislate that a insurance provider would cover air ambulance service. And where we have an issue is we are self-insured, as are most school districts, and self-insured organizations cannot be mandated legislatively to decide what is covered and what isn't covered. So this legislation doesn't hurt us, but it really doesn't help the problem we're trying to solve. So I, some guidance, I think my recommendation would be, and I put a call in to Delegate Parrott and Senator Seraphini, explaining what I just explained here, and have not heard back from them at this point, but I will keep everyone, the legislative response team will certainly keep everyone in the loop on this. There's no reason to oppose this, I'm not sure there's a reason to take a position. We're working with them, if they feel there's some way that this might help their position, you know, we're going to be good team players. But again, this does not help solve our problem, we're still here trying to find out how we can get the federal government, the state government, the insurance companies, and the air ambulance providers to all sit down and say, we have a problem that is bankrupting some families, and we need to find a way through this. So we're not there yet. So I'm not sure I'm asking for anything, it's more of a for your information at this point. I'm open to guidance, if anyone has any suggestions, but that's sort of where we are in that issue. Seeing no takers, are there any other questions on, I know we're sending the Friday afternoon packets home, we're, we're giving you everything we have, I know you're reading over those, if you have any questions, this would be a good time to, to bring them forward. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. With that, we're going to look just very quickly at our future agenda items. A reminder to everyone, we do have a joint meeting on March 22nd, I know it's an off Tuesday, so that's why I'm continuing to remind everyone, a joint meeting with the County Commissioners here at CES. I know that's a normal standing committee day, so will all chairs of standing committees, please coordinate with your staff liaisons to find times to reschedule, if you would like to still continue to have those. Any questions at this point on future agenda items, recommendations, you see the list on the back of the page, any questions about any of those? Okay, then we're going to move forward to Board Member comments, I've lost track of where we've started. Ms. Greenwall?
Nothing.
Mrs. Harchman?
Nothing.
Mrs. Williams?
Nothing.
Dr. Hardings?
Just to look forward to the budget hearing next week, and in particular, any recommendations that would come from collective bargaining partners, or anybody else, we've defined a pool of resources now that I think we're, we're working from, but, you know, if, if those should be allocated in different ways, or if individuals or groups think we should ask for more money, ask for less money, I would just invite you to bring all of those points of view, so that we can benefit from, from the opinions of all of our partners out there.
Mr. Gassford?
Yeah, I have a couple thank-yous, I know the Board appreciates this person and generally, I'd just like to say thank you to Debbie, our Secretary, for always being Johnny-on-the-spot when we need something, so I just want to say thank you, and I know the Board also appreciates everything that you do. Over the past few, I guess maybe a month or so, the maintenance folks that have been out on the snow removal teams, everybody else who has pitched in, I'm sure there's probably been a few Secretaries that's kicked the snow away from the door to get into the buildings, all the teachers that have been a part of coming in and trying to get the schools open, so just a thank you to all the staff out there that helped that. And today, I had the pleasure of going out to my car, because I'd forgotten something, and I saw these kids out there, and I walked up to the, looked like the adult, and she was, her name was Ruth, Ruth Danner, I think she's a teacher out at Marshall Street, and she introduced me to all of her students, and it was a pleasure talking to them and hearing how important the little things that they do around this building, and it means to them. So I would like to ask, on your next visit to Marshall Street, because I know you're making your rounds to some of the schools, I'd like to visit, to go out there, because I've, I've never been to Marshall Street School, so I'd like to take that opportunity to go out with you, and, and do a tour, just to see what all they do, because I did happen to come back inside, and there were some students inside, so apparently they've got a nice little program, and I'd like to see everything that they do. So please, on your next visit, let me know, I'd like to be a --
That'd be great.
All right, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher. I did appreciate Dr. Wilcox's description of various activities that have gone on last week around the schools, and I would encourage you to continue doing that. I only got to one of the ones you mentioned, that was Saturday night, or Friday night, and Western Heights, and enjoyed that. But I, I would appreciate you continuing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Just a couple of quick things. I want to say to my former colleagues at Boonsboro High School, congratulations there, believe it or not, their cheerleading team won a national title, it's the first time they've competed in 12 years, and it's pretty, pretty cool stuff with that, I'm really, not to mention, I think they won the academic award also, or the academic competition also, that was probably one you were going to jump on, okay. The other thing is, I was at a Eagle Scout Court of Honor event, and two students from Smithburg High School, Christopher Babylon, Eric Coscendi, were awarded their Eagle Scout, which I think is really a remarkable accomplishment. I always enjoy going to those, to see those young men have that kind of commitment. I would also, I think, I mentioned to a couple of people, there's an article, or a report out from Harvard Graduate School of Education called Making, Making Caring Common. It's, it's an interesting report, and there are some elements in it that are going to address college applications in the future, so I think it's well worth your time to, to take a look at that, it's a good read, something that's really pretty interesting. Thank you.
I'm hurrying, she's in a fast, but I'll come back around.
One more, I'm sorry, that I want to congratulate too, my, my son would go crazy if I didn't mention the, the girls indoor state cross-country, or state track team from Boonsboro High School, particularly Haley Wright, who won four state championships in one meet, the mile, the two-mile, the 800, and the four-by-800. Also, the Smithburgs team, which boys and girls both finished second in the state, Will Merritt, who won multiple state titles, and Micah, I'm not going to try to pronounce his last name, but he is, in every distance from 300 to about two miles, he is just crazy fast. Really, really a remarkable showing from, from Washington County at that meet, so congratulations to all of them, I look forward to having them here at some day, meeting in the future.
This reminds me of Mr. Bailey being here and giving us the news report, I just, we've sort of missed out on that, I'm for sports reporter, whatever, thank you. Dr. Wilcox?
Just a couple things, one is a clarification, during the budget conversation, and I just need head nods, we don't need to revisit all of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Ridenhour reintroduced the idea of the recruiting position at about $105,000. Dr. Hardings looked to increase the ask of the County Commissioners by about $740,000. Is that a total ask, because you, while I walked in, you were talking about where it might come from, but the finance staff wants to know, is the $740 inclusive of the $105, or is the $105 in addition to, I said that I thought it was in addition to, I'm just seeing, so the total ask is 845, in terms of increasing, but it doesn't really increase our asks, okay, I'm looking.
Was that the understanding?
My, my understanding, not necessarily an understanding, but my suggestion was that, that that money could come from, would be your decision and decision of you, your uh, your people. If it comes out of that seven, extra 740, then it would obviously --
We will look at creating it from within the existing budget, as opposed to making it additive, then, if that's all right with the Board, I think it's considered, all right. The second thing is, I wanted to mention earlier, and I probably should have, that the open negotiations process is going really well, we think, we've kind of enjoyed seeing the number of people that are coming into the room, but quite honestly, we're pushing the threshold. One of the things that I've noticed as Superintendent is that there's just a lot of social media coverage, where people are tweeting out as the meeting goes on, and so it seems to me that it might make some sense, I'm also seeing posts by the Herald Mail, as I see her come to her camera, I'm going to make sure I mention the Herald Mail, so they won't use this video, because I'll say Julie Green, no, she hates when I do that. I'll back up and say, so because of some of the social media that's getting out, I think that one of the things that's happening is that people are only seeing that very narrow portion that gets reported, and, and I'm not saying that anybody is, is guilty of ill will, but I think it's just important that the entire picture gets out. So one of the things I'm going to talk to our team about is, because we're already meeting in this room, and we have the opportunity to simply stream this to our YouTube channel, where then if people want to watch it on their own, they could watch the entire meeting, as opposed to just getting the soundbite or recording of something, I do want to talk to our team, I know that that was a conversation that the bargaining teams had, about did we want to broadcast these meetings, and I think at the time, people said no, but then ultimately, when the ground rules were established, it wasn't included. So I want to talk to our team about that, because I honestly, I think if we are going to have open negotiations, every teacher and every community member ought to see what's going on, and not just rely on one or two arbiters of what's going on. So I am going to talk to our team about that, as your chief officer, in terms of the negotiating process. The last thing I want to say, and these two things are not necessarily good news, but I know many of you know Rob Rollins, who recently lost his wife, he just recently lost his father-in-law as well, and I know that, I believe Rob's at the funeral today, and I know he would appreciate a card or a note. These tragedies hit him pretty hard, and he's just an awfully good man, and I think he deserves, as many people who are dealing with tragedy do, a kind note. And then finally, I would also tell you that you've noticed that Mr. Akers is not in the room today, he's dealing with some really tough issues with his mother, and so a note of support to Mr. Akers, I think, would also be in, in line. I believe it's a very difficult situation for Rick right now, that hospice is involved, and I think you all know what that means, so those of you who could send a nice word, or even have a kind thought for Rick, I know he'd appreciate it right now. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We've come to the end of the agenda, and another good meeting, and a great discussion on the budget, and appreciate my colleagues, and we are adjourned.